This meeting of the National Board of Education. It is Monday, November 8th, 2021. Thank you all for your patience as we get ready a few minutes late this evening. Before we do the roll call, I just wanted to bring everyone's attention to the fact that we have new art on the walls today from Mrs. Zebolus's class at Sunset Heights. So, thank you to Ms. Zebolus and all of the students who provided this wonderful fall-themed art. So, with that, when you are ready, Ms. Bishop, could you please call the roll? Ms. Bishop is here. Ms. Gilio.
Here.
Ms. Raymond.
Here.
Ms. Odin.
Here.
Ms. Brown.
Here.
Ms. Johnson.
Present.
Mr. Guarino.
Here.
Ms. Zeem.
Here.
Ms. Timmons.
Here.
Also, we have Dr. McKinney, Dr. Sarfati, Mr. Parker, Mr. Donovan, and I think Ms. Carey was in HR, but she's already gone. Okay. Okay, great. Thank you. Welcome, everybody. I do want to say thank you to everybody. I see that pretty much everybody is wearing a mask in accordance with our last motion regarding masking that is still in effect here in the boardroom and in our schools. I just wanted to remind everybody that in addition to masking, we also ask that everybody who participates in this meeting not talk while other people are talking, wait to be called on, and when you are up at the podium for your public comments, we will do our best to make sure that you are also not interrupted. So that means members of the audience, please wait until it is your turn to speak during public comments. So, the next item is our prayer by Ms. Bishop. And then if we could have, who haven't I picked on in a while? Mr. Guarino, lead us in the pledge. Thank you.
Almighty God, we have the high honor and serious duty of managing the educational institutions of our beloved city. In our common endeavors, may we find a spirit of unity and understanding which will enable us to face our multiple problems with an objective mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will be for the betterment and greater happiness of all of our fellow citizens. Amen.
Thank you, Ms. Bishop.
My pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you, everybody. It is my pleasure to announce that we have two presentations this evening. The first one is from Broad Street Elementary School, and then the second one is from the GPA Class Rank Task Force. I'm going to ask members of the board to hold any motions until we get to the discussion portion of the evening down under unfinished business. That way, we can have public comments before any motions are made. But certainly, I think all of our presenters welcome questions. I welcome questions or comments. So with that, I am happy to welcome Mr. Forrest and Mr. Larnie from Broad Street Elementary School. Thank you for being here this evening.
Thanks for having us, Ms. Raymond. And thank you to Dr. McKinney and Dr. Sarfati for inviting us, and thank you to the board for being here. We're really excited to talk about our school. We only get to talk about stuff like this to each other, so this is fun for us. At Broad Street Elementary School, we've established some universal expectations, things that we hold to be true throughout our day. We expect our students to be safe, to be responsible, and to be respectful. I have a picture of a school bus up there because I want to start with a little story. And it's actually 20 years, actually 20 years, I started my first administrative position as an assistant principal in an elementary school of 500 students. I was the first assistant principal. Within the first two weeks of school, I had this issue. The bus company, our transportation company, kept writing up our kindergarteners for not behaving on the bus. I was losing my mind. These five-year-olds were out of control on the bus, and we were a rural school district, so kids were traveling from all over the place. I sat down with my kindergarten team, and I said, "I'm really struggling. The kids aren't behaving on the bus." And within 20 seconds, they looked at me and said, "Well, we've never taught them how to behave on the bus. They don't know how to ride the bus." That has stuck with me through my entire career when it comes to student management, discipline, rules, and expectations. If we don't teach the children, we can't expect them to follow them. So, our assistant principal, Mr. Larnie, is going to talk a little bit about our universal expectations and how he categorized them.
So, we hold our universal expectations under three larger umbrellas with our students, and we repeat it to them and speak to them about it, and it's be safe, be respectful, and be responsible. And our teachers work really hard to teach each student how to be safe, respectful, and responsible in the different areas throughout the building. They work with them. They talk to them about what we expect in the school and how the students can act in that way. When we speak with students, we ask them about, like, well, were you being safe? Were you being respectful? Were you being responsible? And we can start our conversations with them by going through these different categories.
So, great. This is an example of what a teacher might say to a student at the beginning of school. We want you to be safe. We want you to stay inside the school play area and out of the woods. And I'm not going to read all these bullets for you. I have a better way to present this to you. But what we started to do roughly five years ago is establish lessons that we gave the teachers so that they could teach the actual things that we were expecting in our school. Simple things: go down the slide, not up. Wait your turn. Slide on your bottom. Feet first. Be safe. There's that word again. And move away when you reach the end of the slide. Obviously, the word "safe" is used a lot on our playground expectations. After recess, we ask that they be respectful. Line up quietly because there's classrooms that are still working, so we need to be quiet. Be responsible and safe. Ask an adult for help or to retrieve a stray ball, et cetera, et cetera. Like most of the elementary schools in our district, we go to recess first and then lunch, so the kids transition from the excitement of recess into the cafeteria. And I truly believe in that. We ask the kids to enter the cafeteria in an orderly and quiet manner. Be respectful. Use your manners. Say please and thank you. We actually sometimes stand at the service line and make sure that the kids are thanking our food service staff and actually being respectful. Be responsible. Pick up your trash. As you can see, be safe, be responsible, be respectful, it pretty much covers everything in an elementary school. So, it's not enough. It's not that engaging to the kids. So, my predecessor, Stacy Batchelder, and I made some videos for the kids. We're going to burn those. They're not as good as what you're about to see. Sarah Page, who's a fourth-grade teacher, sometimes a fifth-grade teacher in our building, was working on a grad project about recess and how to teach kids how to do recess effectively. And she started something that we hope to capitalize on in years to come where we actually have professionally produced videos like this one.
Recess at Broad Street Elementary School is all about being safe, respectful, and responsible. As the Broad Street Bulldogs, we can remember P.O.D. P is for positive attitude. A is for act responsibly. W is for work and play safe. S is for show respect. This will help us stay safe, be respectful, and play responsibly with our friends. When walking out to recess, an adult will lead you. Be respectful when walking in the halls and outside to the playground. Stay in a single file with one person behind the other, and your voices are off, so you do not interrupt other classrooms. It's important to be safe on the structure. No running, no pushing, and use the equipment safely like this.
Wait, Logan, that's not how you use the slide correctly.
Wait, it's not?
No. Watch how Ariana goes down, feet first and one at a time, and watch how Brian waits behind her. It's fun to be safe, respectful, and responsible.
If you don't have anyone to play with, just sit on the buddy bench, and someone will come to you. If you see someone on the buddy bench, go over and ask them to play like this.
Hey, Lee, do you want to play USA Talk with us?
No one really wants to play with me.
Well, we do.
I don't know how to play.
We'll teach you.
Okay. Let's go.
When the whistle blows to signal recess has ended, quickly gather your supplies like jump ropes and balls, put them away, and line up in a straight line with your class. Be respectful when walking into the school building. Stay in single file with one person behind the other. This is the time to have quiet voices and no talking once you reach the catwalk. Once inside, walk safely down one side of the stairs, and remember, your voices are off, so you do not interrupt other classrooms. Recess at Broad Street Elementary School is all about being safe, respectful, and responsible. As the Broad Street Bulldogs, we can remember P.O.D. P is for positive attitude. A is for act responsibly. W is for work and play safe. S is for show respect. This will help us stay safe, be respectful, and play responsibly with our friends. Have fun.
So, every one of our students sees that video before their first recess, the teachers give the lesson, but that's still not enough in an elementary school. One of the things that we've started is the Bulldog Brag. So when you catch a student being safe, responsible, or respectful, you can nominate them for a Bulldog Brag. There's a red box in our lobby. This year, we get about anywhere from about 150 to 250 Bulldog Brags a week for the kids, and that's pretty amazing for a school our size. And what happens is on Fridays, I then, we have a raffle. So to get into the raffle, you have to be acknowledged or caught being safe, responsible, or respectful, and then your little Bulldog Brag goes in the red box, and Mr. Larnie and I draw roughly six winners a week. We try to catch somebody from every grade level. And then Buddy the Bulldog comes out. So every Friday in the morning, Buddy the Bulldog meets the six kids who win down at the main lobby. They get their picture taken. I can't tell if you can see in their hands, they're holding a little miniature bulldog. So they get a prize for being safe, responsible, and respectful. And then, Mr. Larnie and I post things on social media. We usually tweet and then have a Facebook post every Friday acknowledging the kids who won the Bulldog Brag raffle. We also, I don't have an image for it, but we also have a classroom. So if a specialist in art, music, PE teacher says, "You know, Mrs. Page's class was awesome this week. They deserve a Bulldog Brag," we also select one classroom, and they get to dog-sit about a three-foot-tall stuffed bulldog that we have. You know, we were apprehensive about that. We thought the older kids would think it was kind of, you know, too childish, but they love it. And now there's this new tradition that's happened without Mr. Larnie and I even knowing. Every Friday, somebody, a new class is going to dog-sit Buddy the Bulldog, and there's this tradition now where the class who had the dog brings it down and presents it to the new class. And that happened without us. You know, at the beginning of the year, I would run down and grab the dog and bring it to another classroom. So, again, we set expectations for the kids. We teach them explicitly, and when they live up to our expectations, we reward them. And it's very, very useful in our school. I think it really speaks to our climate and culture. It's a very nice place, and the kids seem to be loving it, and everybody's safe, responsible, and respectful. So thank you for the time.
Thank you, Mr. Forrest and Mr. Larnie. So I think the question on everybody's mind is, who is behind the mask?
That is an ongoing mystery, and there may be multiple folks behind the mask.
Whenever we feel like the kids are on to it, we'll switch it up. At first, they thought it was me, and then a kid figured out, well, how can he be there and there? Then they thought it was Mr. Larnie, so every once in a while on Friday, Mr. Larnie will walk by while we're taking the pictures, and it is a mystery.
Brilliant. I love it. All right. Did anybody else have any questions for Mr. Forrest or Mr. Larnie? No, it looks like, oh, no. Okay, thank you so much. We all really enjoyed your presentation.
Thank you for having us.
And a special thank you to Ms. Page. That was wonderful.
She's outstanding, and I think it was our ETV people and a high school student in 2018 that helped.
Okay, wow. Well, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Jimmy's giving us the thumbs up. Thank you, ETV. Okay, thank you. Okay, so not to rush, but we're going to dive right into our second presentation, which is regarding the GPA and Class Rank Task Force. Because our student members of the board are also student athletes, and they need to get to the sports awards this evening. So Spencer, you said you have something on the computer for us?
Yes, yes, I can pull that up.
Fantastic. I think we should totally leave Spencer's sign-in up here on the screen for all of us. Is there a way to take that down momentarily? Yep, that's what I just said for Mr. Forrest. Yeah.
I can tell.
I don't, I don't want Spencer's to show up here for everybody. Yeah, let's, we can't do that. Is there a way to take it down for two seconds while Spencer puts in his code?
The password showed doesn't show up.
Yeah, but.
It stops, right? I should, let's see.
Yeah, but we don't want everyone to see. It's too late.
Well, you know, the address is public.
Okay.
Everyone can see that. And then, yeah, one of the times it just stops. Yep. The password showed, then it stops.
Yeah.
So.
I don't love this.
There we go. And disregard the profile picture. So I'm, I'm in.
Oh, Mike, Spencer, your mic. I'm sorry, Mr. Dunn.
Yep. Then they won't even see it. Yep. You guys want to pull this chair up? I was gonna say, my profile picture, I suffered from updating it when I was in sixth grade and not being allowed to change it. So it is a video game from being a sixth grader, so.
That's lovely.
Which I find quite humorous. You know, my Fortnite days of being a sixth grader, so. So I'd like to open up with this presentation. The GPA Class Rank Task Force has met for almost two years now. We were put on hold for a bit due to the COVID-19 pandemic, but we have had a lot of findings and recommendations for you today. So some role and purpose, since 2019, students have been approaching the board regarding class rank through emails, public comment, and surveys. There are many students that are very passionate about this subject, and on April 9th, 2019, the board approved to form a committee to discuss the GPA and class rank system, and should it remain, are there, offer other alternatives, and conduct research to support these recommendations. This was put on hold during the COVID-19 pandemic, and on August 9th, the board approved a second motion to allow the GPA task force to reconvene, and that is what we did. We have convened many times since then and have put together a report of findings and recommendations for you today.
Would it be convenient to have one person be in charge of flipping the screen and the other person standing at the podium, or people?
Yeah, that would be perfect.
That way, you don't have to keep moving away from the microphone. All right, so you do have to press the button just like at the desk.
And as Spencer just previously mentioned, the task force consists of teachers, students, and parents. So on the left side, you can see the active members of the current task force, and on the right are the previous members of the task force. And here are the dates of our meetings.
So our current practice is that we have, students get ranked starting in their junior year of high school, and they're ranked from one through the number of students in their class, and their rank is based off of a weighted GPA scale. So at the two high schools, we have two GPA scales. One is weighted and one is unweighted, and weighted referring to that classes of higher difficulty are given more weight to their GPA. And then at graduation, the top 10 students are recognized, and then the valedictorian from each school will make a speech at their respective graduation.
I'm sorry, I didn't write down your name.
I'm Jason Kwan. I'm a junior at Nashville High School.
Thank you, Mr. Kwan. Go ahead.
And from our reports taken from the survey, once, most of the results recorded that rather than enrolling in courses of personal interest, students chose classes that carry more weight in order to increase their overall GPA and thus their class rank. Furthermore, classes that don't have an impact on a student's class rank are taken through V-Lax, so core classes such as gym, biology, or algebra one are passed and just simply taken online. Furthermore, class rank encourages students to share their academic standings to those of their peers rather than trying to achieve personal, personal growth. And one student on the survey reported that class rank of any kind is a horrible way to give motivation to students, and it doesn't really help anyone, and it devalues the attempts of low-ranking students. And then lastly, another student reported that I have some friends who are very scared and anxious about class rank next year, and it seems like an, like an almost unhealthy level of competition and nervousness.
So to go over some data points from our survey that we did district-wide, some things that I'd like to highlight is 349 students think of class rank more than once a week. That's 22% of our total surveyed student body. 81% of teachers believe that the current class rank system must be changed, and 0% of survey colleges believe that class rank is a major factor in our admissions process. And we had surveyed many, many colleges from all varieties, so we have prestigious colleges like University of Chicago, we had UNH, University of, UMass Amherst, so colleges from all over. And all of those colleges said that class rank was not a major factor in the admissions process, which is something that many of our students do believe is true. So to first highlight teacher data, on the left, we have a graph that shows that 60.2% of teachers believe that the class rank system encourages academic dishonesty, and on the right, we have a graph that shows that 72.2% of teachers believe that the current class rank system is unhealthy to students. Now for some student data. On the left, we have a graph that shows the anxiety and stress levels of students and how they believe class rank affects them, and we can see that students overwhelmingly believe that the current system promotes stress and anxiety. And on the right, we have a graph showing, showing students that avoid classes that aren't included in our class rank calculations, and we can see that more than 50% of students will choose to avoid classes based on how they will be factored into their academics. And that's what Liz, I touched on earlier, and Jason had, where students will choose to take courses online such as for gym and classes like that, because those classes will not be factored into their GPA calculations. For some combined data, on the left, we have teachers' preference to recognize students' academic success. So as we can see, many teachers are much, are much higher proponents of exploring new methods or eliminating class rank completely than the amount of teachers that would like to keep the current system. And on the right, we can see that that is reiterated by the students as well. Although class, although many students believe that class rank doesn't matter to them, the majority of the students believe that it either doesn't matter to them or the majority as a whole was that they would either like to eliminate class rank completely or look at other methods to substitute for the system.
The Nashville School District's overall mission is to educate the whole student and empower student success. However, how can students be, reach this level of personal success when there's a constant, constant emphasis on outperforming other students? Academic dishonesty and unhealthy competition amongst the students are negative side effects of class rank and pose as impediments for the district's mission of educating and empowering the whole child.
So as a task force, we decided that we want to keep the current practice of class rank up until our current freshmen graduate, and we felt that this was only fair to them because they came into high school with the impression that class rank would be a thing. So maybe some of the students designed their schedule to like boost their GPA and stuff like this, so we wanted to keep this the same until they graduate. So our plan was, starting with the current eighth graders, which would be the class of 2026, we would like to implement some type of new system to recognize academic excellence and achievement, which does not include class rank. We also want to look at revisiting the GPA scale and aligning it with competencies, and we felt that our current scale, our current weighted scale, which is out of a 5.4 scale, it would be much easier to do a 4.0 scale because 5.4 can be confusing to some students and teachers. So a 4.0 is like the standard scale for a lot of different other schools, so we want to move towards a 4.0 unweighted scale. And then we will reconvene and then come back to the board with a recommendation for the new system no later than January 31st of 2022.
And just to provide some quick anecdotes, I know personally, when I became a freshman, I chose to take classes that wouldn't be factored into my GPA. So personally, I did not take gym as a freshman, and I took Gym &amp; Health Online to make room for these classes, and I'm actually taking gym as a senior next semester. And I think that goes to show that how big, how much our current class rank system really affects our students, and I missed out on making those connections with my fellow freshmen because I chose to take other classes that would be factored into my GPA.
And just like Spencer, last year, I wanted to take the class Biotech, which is a two-year course that Nashville North offers, but my guidance counselor informed me that I was unable to do so because all throughout high school, I had been stacking my schedule with AP classes, which were four years, instead of different CT classes such as woodworking, biomechanics, or biotech. So along with taking classes that just boosted my GPA, I missed out on a whole different section of courses.
And for me personally, I think in eighth grade, hearing about stuff like gym online, it was, it seemed kind of silly to me, like, why would you take gym online? But I mean, I'm guilty of it, too. I took gym online just to fit in other AP classes, and don't get me wrong, like, a lot of the AP classes at our schools are really good, but there are other classes that I would have rather taken than some of the AP classes that I've taken just to boost my GPA. And I think at this point, class rank has turned more into a, of a game. It's kind of like Monopoly, like, you pick the classes just to boost your GPA. It's like in Monopoly, you pick the right properties to win you the game. And I think one example of how ineffective class rank is, is that, like, say for example, you have one student, they're ranked five, and then you have another student, they're ranked eight, but in terms of their GPA, they're only like 0.01 points off of each other, and it doesn't really seem fair to have this discrepancy where one person is three ranks higher than another when they're that close together. They should be recognized the same way, and they're both highly academically achieving students, and it shouldn't be like one student is like three ranks higher than another. It doesn't really make much sense, and it's not really fair to, to both of the students. So, yeah, thank you.
And now I'd like to open up for any questions.
All right, thank you. I really appreciate all three of you being here, and I will try to keep us so that you can be down the hall. What time does that start?
Seven.
I can be a little late. We have like 30 minutes.
All right, we'll do our best.
It'll be all good.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Dunn, Ms. Brunel, or Mr. Kwan? Okay, I'll go around because it looks like we have a bunch of hands. Ms. Odin?
I, I was speaking to Dr. McKinney earlier and Jason, but have, has the committee looked at competency-based grading in another way? I know I was on interview team this summer, and somebody who teaches in another district had, they have competencies, but last year, they went to competency-based grading. We are still using the numerical system, from what I understand, and somehow changing it into competency-based grading. Did the committee talk about competency-based grading purely as something that should be used with competency-based education?
So I think as a whole, the main point of this task force was to just discuss both GPA and GPA and rank, but in part, you know, as you just said, competency-based grading is a huge part of that grading scale, and I think right now, due to class rank, we're kind of losing that sense of competency-based grading because we are ranking, we are having numerical values. So it does seem counterintuitive. So I think as a whole, what we were trying to do is by changing class rank and eliminating that and just having a 4.0 scale would actually align us further with a competency-based grading.
Okay. And I would just like to make the comment, last year, when we were going through, the year before, the pandemic, we had a teacher from the high school write to the board and say, "Could you please consider pass/fail?" Because students who fail, it will be on their transcript forever. And they said, "Could you please look at this?" And we made a motion to go forward. We had probably 80 to 100 emails from students, and it was all about my grade, my GPA, what college I got into. There was absolutely nothing about learning and understanding, and that troubled me greatly. Also, it was obvious. Also, it was obvious from just a few students that were juniors who were upset that they might not get credit. And it was a matter of, I didn't work hard my freshman and sophomore year, but now my junior year, when my grades count, I'm working much harder. And I think maybe we're sending the wrong message to freshmen and sophomores that you don't, because it's not in your GPA or not on your record, you don't have to work as hard. And I think that's a wrong message to send to students. So I would hope the committee would look at that. I know it's a fairly new policy in the board, but policies can be changed if they're not good policies. So I see Dr. McKinney has his hand up. I'll relinquish the microphone.
I think Dr. McKinney perhaps has an answer a bit, perhaps, to what Ms. Oden is asking?
Yep. Thank you. The, included in the findings is the north and south profile. And if you look at it, it's labeled from 2015, 16. So some of the grades that we give on there, we don't even assign anymore. So they're looking to revisit that scale. Also, the recommendation for the new system is that we're going to come back to the board by February 15th with the recommendations, what it's going to look like going forward. Because now is an opportunity to go speak to the eighth-grade students before they come into high school, what the system's going to be and what it's all about. So those are some of the reasons behind the recommendations and why the task force picked those dates and picked the time to come back and revisit some of the work that's being done there. So I hope that's helpful.
Well, thank you, thank you all. I know this has been a years-long project, and there are students who worked very hard on this who aren't here. I think Haley Sweeney, I think Josh Gao, I understand he's being honored tonight for, I think it's an athletic event. But I thank you all because this really is for our students, for all of you. And school should be a positive experience. When I saw the presentation, when I saw all the photography up here on the wall, I couldn't help but think, how many students might be missing a class like that because they're worried about GPA? As you get older, you need a hobby, something that is not academic, that is not part of work. But I think we're cheating our kids by putting such a emphasis on GPA. So I commend all of you, and I thank you because I think you're headed in the right direction. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brown.
Thank you. My first one was just a question. I just wanted to clarify that junior and senior years, nothing's tabulated until junior and senior year, correct? Though before that, it doesn't count. So my biggest question is, honestly, I think I'm very supportive of the change into class rank. I actually did some of my own research back in the spring, and then again, when this has been resurfacing. And I did read that most colleges don't take this as really into their, whether they approve you or accept you or not. I was actually shocked even from my research and yours, that 0% of colleges that you called did that. That's amazing to me. So it seems like we're using currently, the class rank system is very antiquated. So knowing that and that I am supportive of this, it looks like the teachers and the students are overwhelmingly in support of it. And also, coming off the back end of a pandemic with so many students emotionally traumatized by so many other things, I'm wondering why we're waiting another, it's going to be four years before teaching students are actually affected by this. And actually, I think Liz, why are we waiting to institute this and not doing it with either the freshman or the sophomore class now? I kind of understand sophomores because maybe they've started to create their schedules. Freshmen, you don't even get that many classes to choose from on your schedule. You know, your classes that you're allowed to choose are limited. And actually, I can say, I was a student that took summer school gym and summer school American history and summer school health so that I could make sure that I could take AP art and AP band and also all the AP classes. And that was in the 90s, that still was going on. The idea that now we have such a strong CTE program and we have communicate programs that work with our local colleges where kids can get out college credit, and we're not allowing them to take advantage of that, to prevent it for another two to five years seems very, I think that's a mistake. So I guess now that I've confirmed, because that was the only piece I wasn't sure about, was whether junior and senior year was the only part that came in. Moving forward with this, I would actually prefer to modify the recommendation to start with this year's freshman and/or sophomore class because I think waiting longer is actually a bigger mistake. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Brown. And just a reminder to everybody that we're not doing motions until after public comments. Go ahead, Ms. Johnson.
Thank you. I want to thank everybody. I mean, this was a lot of work that was done. I have a lot of questions. How many parents were actually on the committee? Does anybody know? Because I see maybe two or three, two altogether?
To my knowledge, there's currently two active parents on the committee, but prior to that, there were more, I believe.
Okay. Two active parents. I made some phone calls today to some colleges and universities around the country and asked what their admission standards are, basically. So let's see, Brandeis, yes, GPA and class ranking was a big thing. I mean, it was Brandeis, I guess. University of Florida, they kind of do the holistic approach, they look at everything, but class ranking and GPA was involved in it. Let's see, what else? University of South Carolina, holistic approach, but GPA and class ranking. Southern New Hampshire University, their GPA was as low as 2.5. But they did look at it, it was one piece of it, for the exceptions. Harvard, GPA and class rank, not required, all high schools, only because they don't do a lot of this anymore. Okay. UNH, look at GPA and course load, not so much class rank. So, and BC, they look at the whole academic record. So there still are some colleges and universities out there that still look at it.
So there are universities that look at it and take it into account for their admissions, but, and the colleges I reviewed, no college said that it was a major factor in their admissions. So if it was available, they would look at it and it would be part of their holistic admission process. But there are many schools that don't do class rank, so it wouldn't be disadvantaged if you did not have class rank on your transcript.
Also, just to point out, there is a parent and a college representative who works in higher ed, who works in the admissions office, who was on the task force.
Okay, thank you. I just want to make sure that we're focusing on questions right now, given that the students have to get to their award ceremony at seven. And then, of course, we'll have time for discussion.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask, you know, that I made those calls today. That's it. That's it.
Okay. Mr. Guarino, did you have any questions?
I don't have any questions, but I'll make it quick. I just wanted to commend the students here for making their argument. I think they make a very good argument, and they did a lot of work. There's the Latin system, if that's the correct nomenclature, which the colleges use, by the way, even though they look at, some of them look at class rank as part of their admissions. So I think it would be okay with colleges if we had the Latin system, which still commends our top students, and it still gives the students in our school, the top students, recognition. So I think it was a job well done. I don't have any questions, I'll just keep it short. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Guarino. Ms. Gilio.
I just want to thank all of you. It's a lot of hard work, and I know it's important. And I don't have questions at this time, but I look forward to seeing your recommendations coming up soon. And I think that this is very enlightening, and I thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gilio. I have a question about merit-based scholarships and awards. And I know that's kind of tangential to your work, but I'm curious about whether changing our class rank or GPA system would have an effect on our students' ability to qualify for those merit scholarships because college is exceedingly expensive. And I know that a lot of our families rely on merit scholarships in order to afford it these days.
Ms. Brunel?
Yes, so currently, our GPA scale is on a 5.2 scale. So many kids are under the impression that their GPA is higher, but in actuality, most schools use a 4.0. So students look at their GPA and they think, wow, I'm doing really well, my GPA is really high. But in actuality, compared to other schools, it's lower. And at least the scholarships that I've come across and applied for, class rank isn't very, I guess you'd say, prominent in the factor. I've written multiple essays and mostly just like letters of recommendations are the things that really stand out rather than class rank.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Ms. Bishop?
I think when we're talking about class rank and GPA, we tend to kind of go in the same kind of homogeneous circles, probably from, you know, ninth grade on. And I'm thinking, opening up the opportunities for students who are mainly focused on the AP classes and kind of those higher-ranking opportunities, not only miss out on kind of the more artistic classes, I know I was from one of those families that was, no, you're taking calculus, not pottery. I wonder if by allowing the opportunity to be in more artistic classes, not only are you broadening your homogeneous group, but you're bringing a level of like, no, everybody can do these kinds of classes, to kids who wouldn't necessarily go into AP classes. So overall, it would kind of open up the opportunities within the entire school system, not just decreasing the stress and anxiety from the kiddos that really calculate and worry about their merit and their standing. So I do support this. My only question is, is the transition? And there are some kids who are really, they're not internally motivated, they are motivated by these external carrots. I'd be interested to see what you guys come up with in regards to continuing that kind of motivation for those students. So that was, I think it was more of a comment than a question, but really appreciate what you guys have done.
Thanks, Ms. Bishop. Ms. Timmons?
I have no comment at this time.
Ms. Seem?
Well, I would like to know, the teachers that were surveyed, how many teachers, were they just high school teachers, were they junior and senior teachers, were they all four years? And how many, I guess, again, this is a favorite issue of mine, if you will, but I didn't go to our strategic plan and that we were going to have our teachers more intimately involved when we changed policies than they have been in the past. And I might have missed it, it was probably there, but I didn't get any idea of how many, when you're saying that the teachers were all, how did you come up with that figure? Where, you know, I want a little documentation on it. And then I would just, I agree with Ms. Bishop, I think it's her last name, I'm sorry, I'm terrible with names.
Ms. Brown?
Yes, I got it wrong again, I'm so sorry. But I agree with her on this thing about if it's wrong, and it clearly seems that there is something amiss with it, that something needs to be changed. If that's the case, then I absolutely agree, we've already, this has already been pushed and pushed forward, and it seems like we're postponing it now for a lot longer than we need to. And so those are my two comments or concerns.
Okay. Were there any other questions for the task force?
Well, can she tell me, going back to the survey of the teachers, it talked about a survey of the teachers, right?
Right. The surveys were sent out to all the teachers in the high schools. And Spencer, do you know the exact amount?
I think Dr. McKinney was just getting the number right now for you.
Oh, okay.
214 teachers.
214? Out of, may I ask, how many are there? Then, to give me, if we have 300 teachers and 214 answered, is that what you're saying?
214 teachers responded to the survey, yes.
But how many teachers were asked to a survey?
All the high school, it's a staff survey, so it was included to everybody in the...
But we don't know how many the high school teachers are.
I don't have that information right now.
That's all right. I think it's on one of those, actually, I think I can go back to that document that was, 80%, thank you. Mrs. Timmons, thank you so much, I appreciate it. Sorry, guys, I wasn't trying to give you a hard time. I just think that's a good figure to know. Thank you.
Sorry, Ms. Brown, go ahead. I don't like this seat, I can't.
I was going to ask if maybe it would help from a theme, could you go back to the slide that says combined data? Because I think that's what she's kind of asking. So it says the total number of teachers, preferences, and that kind of stuff, student data, and then combined data with teachers.
So if we do, yeah, so we had the number of teachers that responded, but the numbers on the left show, so 125 teachers said that they would like to explore other options. So having that exact data point right there might be helpful.
Go ahead, Ms. Seem.
I'm sorry. And finally, I wondered if there are student bodies at both the high schools. Actually, I remember the one at South was very impressive, I went to a meeting there. And I'm wondering if those bodies both had an opportunity to have input to this process as well.
Yes, we currently have the pleasure of our South, at least, group on class rank. Join us tonight, and they will be, love to speak during public comment.
Thank you.
Okay. Is that your intention, ladies and gentlemen, to speak during public comments? Okay. Go ahead, Ms. Brown. Your mic, sweetie. Sorry.
At the board's pleasure, may we invite them to speak now instead of public comment?
Any objections?
No.
Seeing none, are you prepared to speak at this time?
Yes.
Okay, great. When you come up to the mic, please introduce yourself. It's fine to say which school if you'd prefer, but please don't indicate your address or anything like that. Mr. Dunn and Ms. Brunel, feel free to run to your other commitment whenever you need to do so.
Sounds good, thank you. Can I just close this down now, and then I'll head over to the auditorium?
Yes.
Put the screen up, is that okay?
Yes. Oh, that's perfect. Thank you, Mr. Dunn. It may or may not go up at some point. Okay. Preference for speaking order? Okay, great, perfect. Just make sure that the green light is on, and feel free to adjust the microphone to your comfort level.
Can you hear me all right?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Raymond. Well, hello, Board of Education. My name is Smeysahu, I'm currently a junior from Nashville High School South, and I'll also have the pleasure of serving as Nashville South's Board of Education Student Rep in the winter.
Congratulations.
Thank you. So I'm obviously here to speak on class rank, and it has contributed to an environment that promotes academic dishonesty, and it's destroyed the mental health of so many of my peers. And after witnessing all of these effects that it's caused, I've gathered a group of my friends and the student body as a whole, and we sent emails to the Board of Education, and you may have seen that in the summer. And after the class, the GPA task force resumed. They got their work done. And although I'm really thankful for all of the research that they've done, I just want to say that I agree with their conclusion that we should make a modification to the rank system. But I do agree with the sentiments of Ms. Brown that it's just not enough to get rid of it, starting with class of 2026. We have so many students right now that are suffering from the effects of class rank. And I just don't think it's effective, and it's just not logical, with all honesty, to get rid of it for so long. Like, I understand that students have been working to get to a certain rank, but their GPA and their transcript can stand out for themselves. And the fact of the matter is, class of 2023, we've only gotten, we've only had our class rank for, what, two months? It is not some permanent thing that it's just here to stay. It's an independent variable that depends on our GPA, and it can go at the snap of my fingers, if that makes sense. But I guess that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Well spoken. Thank you.
Thank you. Did you turn it off, Mr. Sahu?
He said, leave it on.
Oh, okay. My name is Shritan Gade. I'm a junior at Nashville High School South. And I didn't get it. I have to say, I agree with everything about getting rid of class rank, and along with what my friend said about removing it to the junior year class as well, along with the sophomore and freshman year class. And I've spoken with multiple sophomores and freshmen about their class rank opinions, and a lot of them said that they're taking like, a lot of like AP classes. They're like setting up like three or four AP classes, and they're like, oh, I want to do all these classes. But they're not taking into consideration the factor of whether or not they're interested in these classes, whether or not they're like, close to like what they might want. Like, I know it's like a long way in the future and what they might want to do, or like an importance of like their own personal mental health along with taking these classes. And this just creates a toxic environment in which people's mental health are just being negatively affected by these increasing like choice of rank and like their opinions on it. And along with that, it creates like an environment in which, for academic dishonesty, I've had people log into my X2 or Aspen, which is like our grading system. So it's like, luckily, there has been a change. So we have now changed our passwords, which makes it harder for them to log in. But before, it was easy for them to log in if they knew your birthday, so they could just log right in. And I've had like multiple people log into my X2 and look over my grades and compare themselves from them to me. I'm like, oh, okay, he's not a competitor. It's okay. And that's just, it negatively affected me thinking, wow, these people think so lowly of me, or like, they're just looking, like going personally through my information, and they're not even taking into consideration my mental health or my factors. Along with that, people have like, previously, people have unsubmitted assignments from Google Classrooms and X2 to like get ahead of other students. That's just like absurd to me to think about, you're like going through someone else's account, deleting their grades, and then trying to get yourself ahead of them. And along with that, I'm talking about now, I'm doing the CTE classes. I took V-Lax Gym, I took the V-Lax Gym classes in Physical Science so I could get ahead in my STEM classes. I am a STEM student. I love STEM, so that was great for me. But a lot of my other friends, they took like Algebra II and Precalculus and V-Lax, and they're not taking like AP Calculus, BC full year. And then they're also like taking all these other AP Science classes, which is like mentally not helpful for them. And I just like think it's like not such a good option. Oh, also, I was speaking to teachers about the previous graduating class from about six years ago. And it was a teacher at South, a freshman writing teacher. She said that rank back then was also an issue that negatively affected her throughout her high school year and her college application process. And it's in a process that's been continuously affecting us throughout the years until like this day. And I'm really hoping that we can come to a good consensus today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Rena. I also have a lot to say about this topic. So I'm an artist, just like you and you. I took, I'm taking the AP Studio Art class, but they kind of just squeezed me in there because I didn't take other art classes before because I was worried about my rank. And my friends over here know that about me. They know how resistant I was to taking choir and concert choir, even though I am an amazing singer, because of the rank. And I was worried like, oh, I can't take all these art classes that I want to take, and I can't take all these music classes because I have to be in AP Bio by junior year. It was, it was really damaging to my mental health because I felt that all my life, growing up as an artist and growing up as a creative, I was kind of trying to fit in a place where I don't belong. And this is just another example of that, where we're kind of being measured by our abilities in terms of how we can take tests and how we can turn things in on time and do all that. And my abilities are elsewhere, and they're not of less value. So I don't know why we're counting them for less. With that being said, I feel like there are so many other juniors, specifically, in the same boat as me. And we've been, I mean, Haley Sweeney started it all, but we kind of pushed for this to become an issue again. There, we've been on this issue for years now, and I just feel like our juniors too, our juniors deserve better. Maybe, maybe our seniors are, it's too late, but like Sumay said, our rank has only been out for two months. And for me, it's like I have so much talent and so much ability, and I just feel like the school systems have failed me, in a sense, with all of these numbers that I don't really, it's like a fish climbing a tree or an elephant climbing a tree. And it's like, all of you have to take the same test and go by the same system. It's not, it is not that black and white. So I feel like our juniors also deserve to reap the benefits of these decisions. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd love to see some of your art. Didn't it never sit there?
Hello, my name's Pradithi Madhurigoo. I'm a junior at Nashville High School South. More than reasons why a class rank is bad, I actually have a personal story to share about the pandemic last year. I've never been like a super, like dishonest student. I have done all of my work, most of it. All of it is original. I spend a lot of time doing homework. I spend a lot of time attending clubs. And yeah, it does have a great impact on my mental health because I don't have much time to rest. And last year, when everything kind of, kind of went to the pandemic, online learning was really hard because teachers didn't know how to teach through a computer screen. Kids were not attending class. Screens were like, your camera was off. They didn't know if you're paying attention. And I don't blame the teachers, honestly. It was a tough time. Like, the curriculum is not meant to be taught through a screen. It's meant to be taught person to person. And I made the mistake of taking AP Micro, a class that I knew that I was not going to succeed in, but I took it for the GPA boost. And my mom is immunocompromised, so I could not go into school when we had the in-person option. But I did have to come in to take my final. And 15 minutes before I took my test, I found out that my grandparents passed away. So I couldn't really focus during the test. I didn't do as well as I wanted to on the test at all. My GPA has been severely affected by that, and my class rank also went down quite a bit. I am still top 10%, just not happy with my class rank. And it's kind of hard because a lot of other kids took the test online because they didn't really care. I know a few of them cheated. A lot of kids were like dishonest during the whole time. They took classes that would generally be hard in person. And it was tough for me because I knew that I couldn't do that to myself. I can't cheat. I have a guilty conscience, always. It's not something that I will ever do. And just saying that, like, is the rank even accurate anymore? Can we measure how academically, like, can we put kids in a rank that some of them cheated, that got the higher GPA doing less work? Is that even like promoting healthy learning? That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gao?
I just want to say thank you to all the students for sharing, for all the research that the task force has done, and just for all the board members who've supported this initiative, for all this time. I started coming to the Board of Ed meetings during public comment three years ago, my freshman year. And since then, it's just been such a big conversation within the high schools. And I think leaving it kind of short and sweet, just like, wanted to leave you guys with a question. What if, what if all this time that we spent thinking about class rank, thinking about how we can measure ourselves, how we could get this better numerical label, what if all this time was spent instead on learning? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gao. And the last student in the hoodie, did you wish to speak?
Oh, I don't know.
Okay, I'll go back to not noticing. All right, excellent. Thank you all so much for coming and speaking. I think it's very brave to come up and share with us, and I really appreciate it. Okay, Mr. Kwan or Ms. Brunel, any closing thoughts before we move on? No? Okay, thank you so much for coming out tonight, Mr. Kwan and all of you students for sharing this with us. We are going to move on with our agenda, and then we will be back to this topic for discussion and possibly motions later in the agenda under unfinished business, which is really not that far away. Okay, so the next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Does anyone have anything they would like to remove from the consent agenda? Okay, seeing none, I am looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Still moved?
Okay. I'm sorry, who seconded that?
Mr. Corino.
Okay, Mr. Corino. All in favor of approving the consent agenda, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Pass this eight to one. We don't have any items removed. Does anyone have any communications outside the consent agenda? Okay. Now, that brings us to our first public question comment period, limited to items on this agenda. We have a 15-minute time limit, and we ask everyone to keep their comments brief, two, three minutes or less, so that everyone gets a chance. If I call your name and you are wanting to wait till the second, please just indicate that when I call your name. What I've been doing as of late is calling the first person's name and then the second so that they can prepare themselves. So up first, I have Allison Dyer. And then second, I have Lou Juris. And just a reminder to please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, Allison Dyer, Nine Squire Drive. Okay. In reading the district's mission on the GPA and the class rank, I see the question is posed, how students can reach personal success when there is an emphasis on outperforming other students? I think that the mission is lacking a little bit in tangible substance and thoughtful, like real-world, practical, application-type betting. So people in general make peer comparisons. Students are no different. This is a human nature. And it's pretty normal or natural way of evaluating how we are doing on things in life that matter to us. I think that we should be focusing on what we can do to change the framework or the items of which we use to make those comparisons. I played sports all my life, so I think of things in terms of athletics. If we use this opportunity to place some concrete values on academic tasks, like how we would in athletic competitions, I think we would see an increase to what we could call beneficial comparison that the students make about their own academic performances. While I don't mean to say that this should be the only measure of value for the students to view their academic performance, I think it would lend a level of respect, understanding, and appreciation for other students, their peers that have kind of mastered these skills, in a sense. We know in sports, when a competition's well-designed, and for lack of a better comparison, like the BG versus Nashville High game, a game like this helps our athletes rise to the occasion with that natural human instinct to win the big game, to do our best, to come out on top. If we follow these lines of thinking that competition can help students move towards a beneficial peer comparison, it will allow them to place academics in a similar high regard along with social status comparisons. I just feel personally, doing away with a GPA or a class rank requirement could ultimately be the opposite of wanting the best for our students' educational successes and have a negative effect to prepare our children for the game that is life and an understanding of healthy competition as it relates to the child as a whole, as listed in the mission as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Juris, and then Crystal King?
Good evening. Lou Juris here from Haynes Street in Nashua. Just a comment on the GPA. I know in my household, I've had these discussions where we ought to try to take other courses. And I sense the competition. I sense the, that there's a race to something, that there's, you know, there's this prize to get, whether it's the scholarship or the elite university, et cetera, that we're aiming for. And we are missing out on taking these add classes, culinary, robotics, you know, electricity, electrical shop, auto shop, diagnosing, diagnosing engines. I mean, the things like that, that I certainly cut my teeth on back in the 80s, even in this, in this school district here. I was able to do some of that. And I got into, I got into an engineering program, but I was able to do, I didn't really think of it. That was just me personally, back then. And it's a timely topic, and I'm not sure how this should be phased in. I'm sure there'll be more discussion about it, whether it's done sooner than later. It's good discussion to have. And I've got to be next door as well. I've got a student there who's, who's, it's the fall recognition, I guess, for the sport. So I want to thank you all for keeping us, keeping us well, keeping the students and staff safe over the past many months. And I think the numbers have proven it out, the numbers that you put out every week. I've talked to McKinney. So far, so good. There's going to be some ups and downs. I'm sure there's another, another round of data coming in tomorrow or tonight, whatever. But so far, so good. And thank you for the time.
Thank you. Okay, Crystal King, and then Alicia Houston.
Hi, my name's Crystal. I live on Fairmont Street here in Nashua. First of all, I want to say excellent job on that presentation. It was very well put together, I think. I think that we have a disconnect between class rank and GPA, right? So like, yeah, class rank is really important. It has been since the beginning of time, like ever since schools were invented, I think. You always strive to be the better person because if you're not striving to be a better person than you were yesterday, then what are you really here for, right? Yeah, I can see a lot of different things of like how it could increase anxiety. But so doesn't natural life, right? You want to get that promotion, you got to work harder. You want to, at work, right, as an adult. Why are we creating things that you have, you're going to have to face when you graduate high school? You're going to have to face that. You're not going to get a promotion at your job because you didn't work for it, right?[1791.11] So why are we, that's anxiety too, in itself. I think the students, I have a nephew who's a junior, my son is a sophomore, you know? Take the classes that you want to take, be what you want to be. Don't just compare yourself. I know it's so much easier said than done. I compare myself to others every single day of my life. I'd be sitting, sitting up here lying if I told you that was different. But I work in mental health with adults that have had a GPA in a class rank, right? So it's no different than what our students are facing now, right, our young adults, because that's what they are. You know, they are 16, 17 years old, some young, you know, or older 15-year-olds going into junior year. But, class rank, huh? Wow. So I graduated from Nashville High South back in 2005, and I'm a product of the Nashville school system, and I wouldn't be where I am today if I didn't go to college, and my, it was hard for me to go to college. There was 468 kids in my graduation class. I graduated number 467. You want to know why? I didn't try. So why are we going to say it's okay to do mediocre work? The last thing I want is a mediocre doctor performing a surgery on me. So just do your best, and if your best is all that you can give it, and it, you know, stress, having stress is a good thing, right? There's good and bad stress, and it's, I think it should be up to the parents, it should be a parent vote on our kids, not teachers and students. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Houston?
Alicia Houston, Westwood Drive. I just had a couple points when I was watching the presentation. One of the things that really sticks out to me, of course, is the lack of parental input. Yes, there's two people on there. One of them is an older doctor who teaches at Saint A's, which also does, while I was back there, I was doing some research, they have an honors program at Saint A's that you have to use your class ranking to get into at the college level. So even if you were to get rid of this at this level, it's still going to continue for the rest of their lives. Life is really hard. Life is full of, like, competition. We allow our athletes to compete for recognition. You allow them to compete for scholarships. Whoever gets the most goals, whoever gets the most saves, the most, you know, the best batting average, the most holds in wrestling, or whatever they do in wrestling, I don't know, so I hope I'm not offending anyone, but the athletes can compete. If you take away the class rank and you take away the GPA opportunities for kids to achieve greatness, you're taking away the opportunity for kids who compete academically, because that is a thing. Some kids are not the athletes. Some kids don't get, you know, their thrill on, you know, scoring a goal or scoring a touchdown or making a good play. They get their satisfaction as kids and as their greatness and their level of achievement based on class rank or their GPA, and that's something that's been going on forever. I'm sure everyone in this room had some, something to do with the GPA. And then the other piece that's concerning is, I was also watching this, and I know that here we follow CDC guidelines a lot, so I'm concerned that V-Lax is still an option for math, because V-Lax is, it's remote, and the CDC's Youth Physical Activity Guidelines between the ages of six and 17 is 60 minutes of moderate to vigorous physical activity daily. So if you're going to follow CDC guidelines, we should probably follow them all the way. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And this concludes our first public comment period. Okay. Could we hand that down and ask poor Ms. Oden to put it back for the second comment period? Thank you, Ms. Oden. And so the next item on our agenda is the superintendent's comments. Go ahead, Dr. McKinney.
Thank you. Three things for tonight. I want to congratulate both boys soccer teams from both high schools. The Nashville High South Boys Soccer Team won the Division One Championship last Friday night against Hanover High School at a packed Stelo Stadium. South won an unbelievably exciting competitive game that went into overtime, then a shootout, with South winning 9-8 on a kick by Santiago Somosorsto, a sophomore in the class of 2024, and goalie Leo Copica, a senior, played an unbelievable game as well. The road to the championship went through crosstown rival Nashville North, with South winning in the last minutes of the game, 1-0 to advance to the final. Kudos to Spencer Dunn, who's not here right now, on the accomplishments of the North Boys Soccer Team. North advanced to the semifinal game against South by winning a playoff game against the higher seeded team with a winning, a win over Concord High School, 1-0, and then a win over the quarterfinal game, 2-1 over Portsmouth High School. So congratulations on a great season of soccer. And one final note, the United Soccer Coaches, the largest soccer coaches organization in the country, had South ranked for several weeks, and in the last two weeks ranked sixth in the nation, the only New England team among the top 15. So congratulations to a great team and to Coach Tom Bellin. Also, we're thrilled so many families took advantage of signing up for Friday's COVID-19 Vaccine Clinic at Elm Street Middle School on Saturday, November 20th. Within two hours of announcing the clinic, more than 320 slots were filled, with Public Health immediately opening up another 320 slots for more appointments. So overall, Public Health is now expecting to administer 1,000 doses on that day. So families, please take time to schedule your appointment today. And of course, we say thank you to our City Division of Public Health and Community Service for being so responsive to our family needs and expanding the clinic. And lastly, the City of Nashville's Veterans Day Parade steps off the steps of Holman Stadium at 11:11 this Thursday, November 11th. It goes down Main Street to the Elm Street Middle School, and we're proud to join in with our secondary schools whose marching bands will be participating in the Veterans Day Parade and saluting our veterans for their dedicated service. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Dr. McKinney. Board response to superintendent comments. Ms. Zim?
No.
Ms. Timmons?
Thank you.
No, no comment.
Okay, Ms. Bishop?
I was tasked with picking up teenagers after that South soccer game, and I sat with my sunroof open because I wasn't cool enough to go in with them, but to hear the whole crowd just like scream for joy, and I sat there, I was like, is it over? Because they kept going into shootout after shootout after shootout, and I was like, totally tense for like 20 minutes. Can only imagine how the players were, but that was fantastic, and I loved seeing all the kids together, and I didn't know blankets were such a thing these days, but that was fantastic, and I was just super excited to have been there in that moment, so, I don't know, it was really cool. Stuck with me.
Thank you, Ms. Bishop. Ms. Gilio?
No comment tonight.
Mr. Guarino?
I just want to congratulate the Boys Soccer Team at South. Competition is good in, at certain places, at certain times, and congratulations to them. And that's all I have to say.
Ms. Johnson?
Thank you. I just want to say that I'm glad that we recognized our veterans for the parade on Thursday, because our veterans do a lot for this country, and I want to say thank you to Gloria Timmons for her service.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Brown?
So I actually was inside the stadium with my blanket, and I'm glad I had it because it was freezing. It was awesome. I actually was almost ready to bail after the first overtime, but my 11-year-old wouldn't let me. We made it all the way to the end, it kept going and going, going. It was awesome, and congratulations to the boys. It was awesome. And I actually just won a second. I'm glad we're having the Veterans Day festivities this year. They always do something really special over it, Birch Hill through the years, and it's just really, I'm really glad that they're doing that. Thank you.
Ms. Oden? Okay, so I concur with everybody else, and I'm looking forward to the Veterans Day Parade this year. I have two marchers in my family, so there has been a lot of practicing, so it will be glorious. So, okay. Student member of the board comments. Ms. Brunel?
I would just like to echo everybody else's comments on the boys' championship for the finals. I have to say, after a year of online school and just being seated at my computer, nothing beats standing in the crowds and the stands with all my classmates cheering and screaming next to me. It was amazing time. Definitely made up a little bit for being remote all year. Secondly, tomorrow at 6:30 is the South's Powderpuff Game, so basically, the boys do cheerleading for the night, and the girls do football, and a lot of students are really looking forward to that event. And then finally, students are really excited for winter sports and to kick off their seasons.
Thank you, Ms. Brunel. We don't have the Budget Committee yet. Finance and Operations is tomorrow. Policy is next week?
November 16th.
November 16th. Thank you. Curriculum and Evaluation?
Nothing to report, the meeting's next week.
Next week, okay. And HR met this evening?
And we need to make a, make a motion to waive the rules so that we can vote on tonight's meeting.
Okay. Okay, so the motion is to waive the rules so that we can take up the business they did this evening. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Okay, wonderful. Go ahead, Ms. Zim.
And the HR Committee makes a motion that the Board approve the personnel recommendations dated November 8, 2021.
Second.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Timmons. Any discussion?
Yeah, it was very fast. I think we made, you know, it was a racket.
It was a short, a short list tonight, which is good, I think. Okay, so all in favor of approving the personnel recommendations dated today, 11/8/2021, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Okay, passes two. Do you have anything else for us this evening, Ms. Zim?
No, I'm sorry, that's all. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Does anyone have any liaison reports? JSSBC, I wasn't there last Thursday, I was ill. Was anybody there who can give us a brief update? Ms. Brown?
Go ahead.
Mr. Parker, anyone?
So, Mr. Parker and Ms. Bishop and a few others were also there. It was just most, it was, we met earlier this week to present the final recommendations for the cost analysis for the new middle school. We'll be meeting at the next meeting, which is also, there's another one this month that will be to approve those documents and make that recommendation to move forward.
Thank you. I would think that's on the 18th. Anybody in the public who is wishing to access the proposed cost analysis for the new middle school? It is available most easily through the city website as opposed to our website. Is that correct, Mr. Donovan? Yeah?
I think you can find it both places, but...
Okay. So, it's lengthy. Okay. Unfinished business. We have come to our discussion regarding GPA class rank. Thank you to all of the board members for waiting until this point to do our, any motions or discussion. I appreciate that because it allowed us to listen to the public comments and make sure all of the students had a chance to speak. Mr. Guarino?
Thank you, Madam Chair. As I said, competition is good in its place. There's a certain place and time for competition, and I love to compete myself, but I don't believe it's the be-all, end-all. It has its downsides, and we've heard a lot about the downsides of competition from our students. My belief is the only person you should ever compete with in life is yourself. So whatever it is that you love to do, be better at it next time. That's, that's what I taught my kids. My kids went through Nashville High South. I never once talked GPA with them or talked class rank with them. And, and my heart goes out to those students and the young, young girl here who, who had to put art off, and she, she couldn't do what she loved to do because of the, of the pressure of competition. We should not, that shouldn't be. Our GPA is weighted towards the difficult classes, so what we're doing is, we're telling those talented students that, those students that are talented in art, we're telling them to stop doing what you love to do and, and, and move away from the arts, and, and instead of exploring their talents, instead of doing what they love, we're, we're, we're giving them a disincentive to do that and, and telling them, we want you, by waiting, by weighting the GPA more towards those AP classes, that's the kind of message that we're giving our students, what we value as a district. And so I don't have a motion, but I will support a motion to do away with GPA, and if we do away with it as the recommendation, as we saw in the recommendation, I think there are other ways that we can commend our students, and that's the Latin system. I think we should move towards the Latin system, and it still gives those students who want to be recognized, who do well, it still gives them recognition, it still tells the colleges which top students are coming from our high schools, and, and it, and, and I think that's the way, the way we should go for the, for the better, I think it benefits our students better, the emotional benefits for our students, and like I said, I love competition, the competition has its place, but I don't think this is where we should be having our students compete. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Guarino. The motion that was requested by the task force in the PowerPoint and then also in the longer presentation that we got, not presentation, longer documents that we got last week, last meeting, along with the memo, they asked that we move to, that we make a motion to adopt four recommendations from the task force, that we, their recommendation was that we continue to keep the current practice through the class of 2025, that we implement a new system to begin with the class of 2026, that we revisit the GPA scale and align with the competencies, and fourth, that we ask, we move that they return to the Board by February 15, 2022, as they continue their work.
So moved.
Okay.
I second it.
Okay. So, discussion, I'm seeing Ms. Brown waving her hand. Oh, I didn't see Ms. Johnson, because Ms. Brown was doing this. Ms. Johnson, second. Ms. Zim, too?
Fine, I'll pick the end.
Oh, sorry, I was reading.
No, no problem.
Brown, Johnson, Zim.
So actually, I was hoping to make a different motion. As I said earlier, I support all the work the task force has done. I think the evidence is heavily in favor of moving towards a, moving away from class rank and then revisiting the 4.0 grade scale. I mean, and that's very clear, we're not going to be getting rid of grading and challenging students and high expectations. We're just going to be expecting them to, expecting a, a realignment with our competencies. I would like to amend the motion to begin the, begin implementing the new system with the class of 2024, which would be our current sophomores? I, I don't know, I don't necessarily know the years that they graduate in, so there's classes, is that a 2020, can someone confirm for me, is that a sophomores? All right, so I would like to be, I would like to move to amend the motion to begin with the class of 2024.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Ms. Bishop. Often, we have people who will second, at least for the sake of discussion. So that's helpful, even if people don't agree. Go ahead and do that. Okay. Ms. Bishop or Ms. Seem, did you wish to speak to the amendment?
Well, yes. I almost, I almost think it would have been better if we, if we don't vote on it lump sum, because in the lump sum, if you will, I don't agree with all of it. And so I'd have to vote against everything because of one thing. And that doesn't necessarily represent what I, what I think is best. Having said that, I clearly think that we need to keep the committee and we need to keep this wonderful dialogue going until we, until we come to the highest and best use of it. So I don't know how you, you know, I, and I'm not sure with this amendment that Ms. Brown, I got the right name, that Ms. Brown has just suggested. That's, that's quite a bit of time. And again, it goes to, I would just like to see the committee revisit the, the implementation, implementation dates. But that's, if it's not the will of the majority, then obviously it will not be. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Seem. So it sounds like what Ms. Seem is suggesting is that we split the motion, although procedurally, I don't think we can do that once we've had an amendment. And Ms. Johnson also wished to speak. Ms. Brown?
I'll withdraw my amendment if Mr. Guarino will draw his motion and we vote on things separately.
Mr. Guarino?
No, I'm, I'm not going to withdraw my motion.
Okay.
I think we should take the recommendation of the committee. They worked hard on it. And we should trust, we should trust what they're doing.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Johnson's been waiting unless you wanted to speak to the amendment?
It's a little of both, so it can wait.
Okay. Ms. Johnson?
Thank you. You know, I think we're putting the cart before the horse here. We're talking about voting on something. We don't even have a new plan in place, basically, that they're going to come back and give us the new plan on versus the class rank and also the GPA. So we're voting on something, but we don't have anything to really replace it here. So I think this is really, we're just moving on this a little bit quick. I think we need to have the whole plan in place before you vote to eliminate anything. Is it going to make a difference between November or when, January, when they come back to us, or February? It's not going to make that much of a difference in the dates, even if you move the dates up. So I think at this point, I'm not supporting either one of these. I'd like to know also if scholarships are going to be affected by any of, by changing all this. And I'd like to really know, what are the parents of these students really think about this? You know, there were some parents that want their kids to take AP courses. There were some parents that are very involved in all this, that have visions for their kids. You know, so I'm just hearing bits and pieces and, you know, and I think they've done a marvelous job and a lot of work that was put into this. But I'm not 100% convinced. You know, again, we're putting the cart before the horse. We don't have any plan to pick up where, how we're going to implement this whole thing and what's, how it's going to look. So I'm not going to support any of this. Thank you. I don't care which it is, the main motion or the amended motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Are you suggesting that we have the task force come back with further information before we move forward?
I think we should, because, you know, this is a one-time shot. If we do it wrong the first time, you don't want to go back and have to patch it up. You know, these are our students. You know, whether we have the class rank, the GPA, or however we're going to figure this out, we can't botch it up because it, it means a lot whether or not they're going to get into those colleges or universities. So we've got to make sure we do this right the first time. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Ms. Brown?
I actually wanted to, to Mrs. Johnson's point, and I kind of actually think it speaks to Mrs. Seem's point also. But also, it's a reminder that the GPA and the class rank discussions are actually two different discussions. There are four different, various different things in this, and also a recommendation for another task force to come back with another recommendation. There are a lot of things lumped into this motion, but I would like to, just for a discussion point from Mrs. Johnson, we're not saying that we're going to get rid of GPA. Class rank and GPA are related, but not one in the same. And so I think, while I agree this motion has a lot in it, that kind of, I get that you can't vote, if you don't believe in part of it, you can't vote for any of it. But I think there are some really good things that came out of that task force that are worth considering.
I had a question. Okay, go ahead, Ms. Bishop. I'm sorry, I was trying to look up the, the entire giant thing they had sent us last time, because it was like 30 pages long. Go ahead, Ms. Bishop, and then Ms. Oden.
So are we, if we were to adopt this, are we ready as administration to switch over from a 5.4 to a 4.0? Is that a quick fix? Or do you guys need that full year?
I don't know if we need a full year, but there are some things we need to work out with technology between basically December to February 15.
And that's, that's too soon. Or is that enough time?
We believe it's enough time.
You do? And then, is there, for the quick, the quick, sorry, the quick turnover, which I'm hearing what the students are saying. And I want to do the best for everybody. But I understand that because it's a change, would there be an option for maybe keeping the current practice through the 2026 with an opt-out option? And then have rank and GPA be an informal data gathering point and not necessarily a merit-based practice until we eliminate them for 2026? So then the students who are working hard now, who do want to be in the top 10, can make, can continue working towards that, but it takes some of that pressure off of the students who want to do their best but want to get rid of that rank?
So are you saying for the current students that are in high school, to keep the system the way it is now, and allowing them the choice to whether or not to know if they're, what their class rank is?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, we did talk about that as a committee, as an optional piece, in letting students or parents to do that. You know, just some of the backdoor kind of things that have to happen in technology to make that available from the front-facing side is some of the work that happens over those couple of months. So is it possible? Could we look into it? Yes and yes, but couldn't probably give an answer until the 15th. We need to talk about that in committee. Basically, some of the reports that exist right now, you can run, and I think Liz could speak to this, you could run weighted, your weighted GPA, your unweighted GPA, those are sort of things right now. When kids go in, they see multiple menus of how to see their GPA. So once we build that report, it would be available. It's a question of the time to build that report. Does that make sense? It's kind of all...
I mean, it does. And I, I trust you guys know what you're talking about. And I'm asking kind of the questions of the layperson. My other question is, without, do, and this may be a silly question, but does weighted GPA affect AP placement? Or is it just how well you did in the class before?
Kids can actually choose their classes, but they do, they are recommended by their previous teachers. But regardless of those recommendations or absence of recommendations, they can still take AP courses. But they just have to meet the prerequisite requirements.
Okay. Thank you. I stay out of this with my kid. I let her decide whatever she wants to do. If she wants to work hard, she can work hard. If she doesn't, she can do something else. So... I do, I have more questions, but I'll ask later.
Okay. Ms. Oden, Mr. Guarino, Ms. Brown, I'm going to get back to you. I just want to make sure that people have a chance.
Thank you. When I saw this, I thought four years was an awfully long time. What's interesting, our students here are saying it should be sooner. But I'd like to hear from the committee why the recommendation was for four years. We haven't heard from, from the committee as a whole, who made the recommendation. So maybe we should table this until we hear from them.
I guess the question is, it's a task force and they gave us, I just counted, it's like 80 pages of data. Who is the spokesperson for the task force? Is it you, Dr. McKinney? Is it the students? Who should we be directing those kinds of questions to?
Happy to take those messages back to the committee. You know, this work is achieved by consensus to everybody that was there. So I was informed that you wanted to hear from the students. So they're the ones who put the presentation together, compiled all this. The kids did majority of this in work sessions in our meetings. But their work represents the, the whole consensus of the group. So there's nothing here that's not being communicated, represented by the administrators, the directors of guidance. You know, we had a pretty good conversation, I would say, for them, all the people there that were at the meetings.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Wait, Mr. Guarino? Okay, go ahead.
I'll be, I'll be quick. I, I just wanted to say that in response to some of the other members, that this committee has been at this since 2019. So we've been at this for a couple of years. This committee has been working at this for a long time. So this is nothing that's just been thrust upon us, like we should just be surprised that it's here. This is incremental change. This is small change that's happening, step at a time. And we're not jumping into anything, and we're not being rash. We're, we're actually taking the committees, we're actually putting trust in our students, putting trust in our administration, we're putting trust in our parents who are part of this task force. And, and so I, I, I think this is not rashly done. And I, and I have a lot of confidence in, in that motion and in, in their recommendations, which is, again, only incremental. And then further down the line, it'll be refined as to what we're going to transition to. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Bishop, you had a follow-up. And then I think Ms. Brown was waiting as well for follow-up.
Is this something, if we keep it as the recommendations and we are able to amend it to happen earlier, could we revisit it again and push out, push up the 2026 date during the February revisiting meeting?
I guess, sorry, I was thinking, you know, we're going to keep meeting and working on the things that are listed here until the 15th. So if you have things you want me to bring back to that committee and advise them on, I can do that. These are the initial recommendations. There's more to come. So if you wanted to see things or get updates along the way, we could do that. But, you know, this is the beginning of the recommendations. I don't know if that answers your question, but, you know, they have some work that they've started in the past that has to be resurrected. There's stuff in their archives. They're asking around for a couple of other things. And then I actually gave them a current report from the Superintendent's Association around what does it look like to be college-ready? Some indicators on that. What does it mean to be career-ready? There are indicators on that. What does it mean to be life-ready? So those are three things they're considering for this kind of new system as well.
No, I like it. I just, I don't, if we can do it, I'm just going back to what I've said before. Never mind. But thank you.
Ms. Brown, you had a follow-up?
Yeah, I had two. So one actually was more of like a comment directed towards the idea of making it optional for the two grades for freshmen and sophomores now, up until we would get the eighth grade class in. I actually think that would make the system worse. I think the students that are already suffering from an immense amount of pressure from either self-motivated pressure or parental pressure to take those classes would be the same students that would then be forced or feel obligated to opt in instead of opt out. So I think we're actually further making, I think it's actually worse. So I would, I would actually not, I would not support that option. And I would think of either needs to be, have it or don't have it. My other question is for the administration or maybe for Liz, if you're the representative of the task force. What is the reason, is there like a central reason that the task force recommended a delay? Because it seems like, I'm feeling like the consensus is that sooner to implement this is better. Is there something, is there some roadblock preventing us from implementing it sooner?
At the task force, there were mentions of IT complications and just figuring out all the nitty-gritty things and all the details. So we actually considered having current juniors and seniors either opt in or opt out of class rank, but that would affect the overall students participating in class rank. So it's mostly just figuring out the small details of it and just figuring out different ways to supplement class rank and maybe awarding kids based on a non-numerical scale. So like making the dean's list or other alternatives like that. So we're just looking for other reasons to go about this because, as Ms. Johnson previously commented, this is really a one-time thing and we'd really like to get it right.
Excellent. So, so, thank you. That was very articulated perfectly. So the only thing that's holding us back is from implementing this for the freshman and sophomore class is, is it a block in X2? Is it with the guidance software? Like, is it something, why will it take four years? Why can't it take two years or one year?
I think all in all, the committee was just trying to be cautious of not knowing all the scenarios that freshmen and sophomores may have already worked towards and then not have that be acknowledged and honored. So I think the technology is part of it, but we just wanted to start with a clean slate with the eighth graders coming in and not having, you know, a couple of scenarios where kids are affected and then our hands being tied. What do we do with those students if there was something they were working towards? They took X number of classes in V-Lax, or they're on an AP track, whatever the scenario might be. It's not really an all or nothing thing. They're kind of already in high school and we didn't want to affect the opportunities that would be available to them down the road. If you wanted to go back to the committee and ask that question and have me come back to the next meeting, I can do that. I could speak to them about all the scenarios. But really, the key people that are there that are speaking to it are the two high school principals, the directors of guidance, the athletic director, the ones that are really run these reports and are faced with the challenge of these sort of scenarios when they come up.
Yes. Go ahead, Ms. Bishop.
Sorry, I was also thinking that the 2026, so that's, so our, our kids graduate 2025, so they're freshmen now. Right, so 2020, so I know my kid started planning for where they were going to hit their AP classes in eighth grade when they signed up for AP classes in eighth grade. So her schedule has pretty much been set academically from last year. Not to say that we aren't flexible and she isn't flexible, but kids have been working towards this, you know, for, the kids in school now have already been working towards this for a year. So I think, I think that's probably why, part of the reason why that the 2026 was picked. I do wish we could push it up, but I'm hearing what you guys are saying. And I keep waffling on this. I want to do earlier, but I just don't, I think we have to do a whole, like, skew first.
Okay. I have a quick question, and then Ms. Seem, and then I'm going to ask that we wrap up our discussion and kind of decide on when we're going to have everybody back. So my question was whether or not NIASC would be affected by this change in our NIASC accreditation. Because I know that we had some good reports last time they were out, and I would like to continue that.
Yeah, that wasn't discussed in the committee, so I don't believe so, but I'll double check.
Okay. Ms. Seem?
First off, I'd like to say that this was a topic of discussion much earlier than 2019, as long as I can remember. I think Mrs. Oden will confirm that this has bounced back and forth forever. Having said that, what I'm hearing is that to keep this moving, I'm going to vote, I will probably vote for this motion, but I am putting it with the caveat, the understanding, my understanding is that, that because we vote for this now doesn't mean that if it comes back and we still want to make it earlier, we can't discuss it and do it. But it, but it... But it, but at least it keeps it moving so that the committee feels they have our blessing and they can continue their work. I mean, I think we're all happy with what they brought us tonight and I especially think you guys are wonderful. You probably walk on water because that's how much, I mean, you spoke so, I wish you were my kids. I wish I could brag about you to my family, how wonderful my kids are. But, but I mean, you're very impressive and certainly make me happy to be on this board. You're the reason I'm on this board because we have kids like you. So thank you for that and thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you, Ms. Seem. Okay, so we have, we have an amendment in front of us that we need to vote on before we can vote on the original motion. So, I'm sorry, so the amendment is to amend the motion to begin with the class of 2024 instead of the class of 2026. So all in favor of approving that amendment, please indicate by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, wait, I didn't mean to say aye. Let's go back. Can we do it by roll call?
Yeah.
Okay, apologies, I get confused. The amend, the, the motion is to amend it to start with the class of 2024 instead of the class of 2026. Roll call, apologies.
So Ms. Bishop votes no. Ms. Gilio?
Aye.
Ms. Raymond?
No.
Ms. Oden? Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
No.
Mr. Guarino?
No.
Ms. Seem?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
No.
I still didn't count, right?
I have six noes and three yeses.
Okay, so the amendment fails. So now we are going back to, I love hearing all the cheering in the background. It's distracting me, but it's really lovely. Okay, so now the original amendment from the 80-page document that we got on the 22nd was to adopt the recommendations from the class rank task force. And they had four recommendations. To continue to keep the current practice through the class of 2025. Implement the new system beginning in the class of 2026. Revisit the GPA scale and align with the competencies and return to the board by February 15th, 2022. Okay? Ms. Brown?
I move to table this until, send it back to the committee with.
Point of order, that this was asking for a vote. This was not asking, she didn't have the floor. So it's either yes or no.
Yeah, but I recognized her when she raised her hand.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought we started voting.
Well, we were, I reread the motion and then she raised her hand. I thought she was asking for a point of clarification. But I did give her the floor.
I move to table, please.
Okay, so Ms. Brown moves to table. Do we have a second for her motion to table?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Johnson. It's not debatable. Ms. Brown, I'm sorry, did you have a table till when?
I just wanted clarifications from the committee on the year when it should start.
So motion is to.
Or more clear, better clarification from the committee, that would be more, a better way to write that.
Well, we, I don't, I guess we need a specific clarification for them to come back. Or a date.
Clarification on their recommendation for the, when the date should start.
Okay. Okay, so the motion is to table until the task force can give us clarification on the date to start the new system. Okay, roll call because I have difficulty when we have split.
Ms. Bishop votes no. Ms. Gilio? On the motion to table until further clarification comes in?
No.
Ms. Raymond?
No.
Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino?
No.
Ms. Seem? Ms. Seem?
No.
Ms. Timmons?
No.
One, two, three, four, six noes, three yeses.
Okay. Okay, back to the original motion, which I am not going to read for a third time. Roll call, please.
Ms. Bishop votes yes. Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Uh, yes.
Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
No.
Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
Ms. Seem?
Yes.
And Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
So that passes seven to two. And we will see the task force again on February 15th. And we did ask for information about how this would affect, like merit scholarship eligibility, that more information about the timing of, you know, when it could start. And I asked for information about whether this would affect our NIASC. Did I miss anything? Ms. Oden?
I'm not going to be here, but I do think that we have an obligation to our students to investigate competency-based grading rather than using the numerical system that we have used for 100 years or more. We adopted something new and we have neglected to, to match up the grading system with the competency-based grading. And I just think that ought to be part of the research that this committee is doing. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Oden, Ms. Seem?
How would we ensure that that happens? I'm not sure. I apologize for my lack of knowledge on this subject. But I, when you're saying that, Mrs. Oden, truthfully, I'm just not real sure. Is that going to go to the committee and the committee can do that?
Does that fall under number three of the recommendations or no?
I guess I would just caution the board in expanding the task force roles and responsibilities beyond the scope of what was already there in terms of looking at class rank, looking into the merit-based scholarships and awards, looking at the timing of whether or not that could be moved up earlier, NIASC accreditation. I think it is warrant of a discussion around a consistent grading system in the district. So everybody's talking the same language from parents, teachers and kids around competencies, whatever the grading system is, and not having three or four out there. But if the question is fully implementing the competency-based grading system, is that what you're asking about and whether or not, how we would go about doing that? I think we would need additional time.
Okay. I think my understanding was a question of looking at competency-based grading and whether or not that still, whether or not that has been a success for the district. Is that kind of what you're looking at? Because it, this says, number three is revisit the GPA scale and align it with the competencies, which to me, you have to kind of look at it, but maybe I'm not understanding.
So if you look at the North and South profiles and where it's listed on the GPA, their competencies and the grades are listed there. There are some that we don't assign, so they want to move that around. It doesn't mean we're changing or eliminating it. There's some grades we just don't give. So that would be more consistent. And we'd like to have a 4.0, 4.0 scale that was more consistent and unified as opposed to a 5.4 and some other anomalies that are in there, just to clean it up a bit.
Okay, Ms. Seem?
So are we saying that has a completely different grading scale? It's not a numbered scale? It's, it's an evaluation by the, by the teachers or the districts, whoever's in charge of the? I, I'm sorry if I'm being too simplistic, but I don't understand and I don't want to be.
If you refer back to the North and South profiles in the 80-page documents, it shows you the competencies, it shows you the letter grades the kids get and it shows you what their GPA or grade point average would be for all that. So it's included in the back part of the reports and findings. I can give you a copy of that.
Yep, it's like page 79 and 80 out of the 80 pages. It was lengthy.
And to be honest with you, I find it very difficult because my printer is, I got a new printer and it's not working either, so. Maybe the person doing it, but I'm sure we'll get there someday. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Seem and thank you, Ms. Oden. Okay, next up is new business and we have the beginning of the school year enrollment data. There isn't anything to vote on here. Dr. McKinney, did you have any, anything for the board regarding this?
Nothing other than what's included in the memo that was included in the numbers. It has some enrollment details. We included a 14-year enrollment summary and then some enrollment details around some differences between the years from PlayPals, differences in numbers in homeschooling. The Bronstein apartment is under renovation, so that's a two-year project where those families are relocated. Good news, our kindergarten enrollment is up 125 students this year. And then some changes in Purple Panthers. So we are continuing to look at the enrollment and analyze the data, but I know some board members asked for this information and wanted to give it to you sooner than later. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Johnson?
Thank you. So the paperwork that went to the state, that doesn't come out till December exactly. The state will have it and analyze it. Is that it?
I'm not clear on the December.
Okay, so we sent all the paperwork up to the Department of Ed, right?
Yes, ma'am.
All with, all these numbers?
Correct.
And they take a look at it back around December or so? They'll kind of go over our numbers to make sure the numbers all jive together.
I, I think that process is already done.
Yeah. I haven't seen anything or heard anything from the state. I called up and they said it wouldn't be ready till December.
Oh. Maybe it takes them a bit to review and post it.
Okay, whatever. I'm not gonna, so I saw the biggest decrease was in 2020 with the pandemic. Is that when we lost about 860 students that have got on?
Yes, the biggest drop was last year.
But from 2008 to current, we've been declining students. So we're down to 10,138 students from 12,370 back in 2008. So we're having a steady decline, basically.
We're having a decline, yes.
Yep. Because I remember they used to do, I think, five-year projection. And usually with the projection, we never saw an increase, we always saw a decrease. Do we understand why we're having, why we decreased supposedly? You know, you're building homes, you've got families moving in, people exiting. Anybody have an idea?
As the memo says, we are looking into some of those things across the state. There is a decline in public school enrollment. But if you're looking for specific factors, we'll be looking into that and bringing it back to the board.
I kind of, because, you know, the mayor's going to cry that we don't get enough money. We can't do anything if we have a decline in students. And I'm kind of curious, why? You know, kind of get an idea, are they going more to the charter schools? Are they, the private schools I know are back opening up since the pandemic. Just kind of curious if we can kind of get an idea why we're declining, you know? So.
Ms. Seem?
I asked some of those questions of different people and I found that some of it made sense. Special education, those are high-risk students and so a lot, the absenteeism, for instance, if you were looking at different schools, some of the schools had much greater absenteeism than the others. But if you look at the, one of them was a school that has a high special education and of course, those are high-risk kids and when they get sick, they can't come to school. And so I think that's one of the reasons. Then the quarantine affects it when people are quarantined. And then the, the, there's one of our schools that has an immigrant, a population, they go, they're pickers, they go with their families and, and they have to leave for months at a time. And when they do that, their living is made with picking, is my understanding. And so when they leave, they leave for two months. So if there's 25 of them and they leave for two months, that makes it look bad for everybody in the quarantine. So there's a lot going on. I'm not saying that we aren't decreasing. I'm sure we have a lot more that are going to private schools. But I also think that some of these circumstances play into it as well. I don't know if that helped, but I was trying.
It doesn't make sense. Thank you. Mr. Guarino?
Thank you, Madam President. I would just like to note that our elementary population is up by 136. So we don't know what's coming behind that. And also that even though we've had an overall drop in population by less than 1%, and actually last year was a big drop because of COVID, that was an anomaly, that our ELL population is up, our special education population is up, and it costs upwards of two, three, sometimes four times as much to educate a student who is special ed than a student that's non-special ed. So I, I think that maybe the public can understand what, you know, what, what's going on, that even though the overall general population might be slightly declining, that the, the demands on public schools are changing. And so we have to understand that. And there could be a bubble coming behind that, too. So it might, you know, we might actually either see it plateauing or we don't know if it's going to increase. It all depends on what's happened, what happens in our city. So I think, I think we should kind of wait and see what happens in our city that we may actually, you know, we could actually see more demand on the public schools. So.
Thank you, Mr. Guarino. So this brings us to our second public comment period. Ms. Brown, would you please get the list? If memory serves, I think Ms. Houston was first and Ms. King was second. And then we'll see if anybody else signed up. Thank you, Ms. Brown. Would you like to drink some of my?
Is it on? Yeah, it's on.
Yes.
Alicia Houston, Westwood Drive.
Thank you.
From 2019 to now, the bullying argument has remained the same. We are sorry that your child experienced this. Unfortunately, apologies after the fact don't prevent children from those experiences in real time. Does the district intend to continue taking a reactive approach on handling bullying, harassment or assault issues? Why has the argument remained the same for years without any true resolution or recommendations to improve quality of the student experience without the potential for horrible experiences and lack of follow-through from a reactive district? Although I know this is not a question-and-answer session, I must ask, what does this board or future boards intend to do to work towards zero-tolerance bullying policy? How many children in the school district is the school district willing to sacrifice the trust of before we take harassment, bullying, assault and others more seriously? Answering this issue has been resolved after the fact does not prevent or undo the situations these children experience. Again, reactivity is not working. The issues we are facing now and we have faced for years is that children are being forced to endure situations as children that many adults will not be forced to endure in a lifetime. Being reactive is failing our students. Being reactive without just consequences is making these behaviors okay for the perpetrators and is making the behaviors justified in some ways to the victims, which is not okay. Can you imagine your child being too afraid to tell you something because they were fearful of retaliation because the district is reactive? Imagine if we didn't put our children into those situations. The bullying in Nashua is not good. I spoke with a student the other day who shared with me during a conversation that during a game in a gym, a male student was pushing her using his hands, with his hands on her breasts. Imagine being afraid to say something to your parents or your teachers because you were afraid of retaliation you might experience at the hands of another student. Imagine walking down the aisle as a female or, walking down the hall as a female or male student and having your butt smacked by a stranger and no one says anything, not even the teachers. We are justifying these behaviors and they cannot be tolerated by any. And if we want to change the district for all, it's far past time that the district put bullying prevention discussions on the front of the line. Part of the student experience is feeling safe at school. How do we expect our learners to learn their best if they are in a place where wrongdoings go unnoticed and their physical safety or well-being is questioned every day? Also, thank you so much.
Also, thank you so much for the opportunity to speak, I appreciate your time. Thank you. Ms. King?
So, my name's Crystal Fairmont Street here in Nashua. Couple of things before I get into the real reason why I came tonight. So I find it really funny that Dr. McKinney, you sat here and said that the soccer coaches were sixth to the nation and we're talking about class rank and getting rid of it and we're ranking our soccer coaches. Come on! Ms. Seem, special ed students does not equate to them being at-risk students, medically anyway. Our special ed kids cost more, Mr. Guarino, because they require more. Now, moving on, I want to thank you guys for letting me speak. I want to touch base. Mr. Parker was actually in the school when this incident happened at Brentwood Academy on Friday. My son attends Brentwood, as we all know, on an emotional handicap IEP that he's had since the first grade. He's been in the Nashua School District since the third grade. My son was suspended from school on Friday, November 5th, after he left school saying he was going home at 11:30 in the morning. I didn't receive a phone call until 11:54 AM and it wasn't even from the school, it was from my mom telling me my child was missing. I forensically called the school and spoke to Mr. Warren, who hadn't even notified the National Police Department.
Ms. King, we cannot mention employees of the district by name.
Okay, thank you. So I spoke to the principal at Brentwood.
Again, we cannot call out employees of the district. There are policies on how to address these things and I'm happy to give you a copy of that policy so that you can speak to.
I know, I know the policy.
Okay, good.
I know, and I talked to the Education Commissioner today and this was his recommendation, as long as my lawyer's recommendation, so that's fine.
Well, you're, you're welcome to send us an email, however.
Wait, the National Police Department was not notified of my son's missing from the school. I spoke to, I, I spoke to the school district, the school in general, at 11:57. In case anyone is wondering, that's 27 minutes. 27 minutes that my son's safety was unknown. My son was found by a family member that happened to be in the area. No police were ever called. What's worse? Like, how could this get worse? My son is bipolar. My son has active suicidal ideations. My son told the school this. There are two bridges on the path home from my school. Yet not one of these staff members followed him out of the school. Not one knew which direction he went in, not one did anything to try to protect him or prevent him from leaving the school. Not one notified a parent, National Police or a family member for at least 24 minutes when my mother received the call. Not one protected him. How am I supposed to feel comfortable with my son or my children or our children, these four students even, sitting here in the audience, going to school every day? Every single day? How is this a safe? How is this acceptable for our children?
Thank you, Ms. King. And this concludes our second public comment period. The board needs to have a non-public session. We will not be voting at the end of this non-public session, so effectively we will end our meeting after we come out of the non-public session. No, Ms. Oden?
I have a couple of questions for the superintendent, just clarification. We've gotten a couple of emails. Is the district still supporting and giving to Donors Choose? We're still doing that, because we've gotten an email. Also, I was asked, with the toner problem, is there any way for teachers who are running papers off on their printers at home, is there any way for them to submit something to be reimbursed for their?
I, I met with Conica Manolta, went through everything, there should be no need for that, we have enough toner. I sent out an email to all the schools, to all the secretaries, so if teachers have issues, contact their secretary or contact their principal, we have a plan in place, there's no need for people to be doing that on their own.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Donovan. Okay, so I am looking for a motion.
We have board member, excuse me, do we have board member comments?
We could, I'm just noticing that Mr. Clausen has been patiently waiting for us for, what, 40 minutes now?
I, I just wanted to say something to the.
Forty-five, he's letting me know.
I just, I just wanted to say something quickly to the students who are sitting here, that it was a privilege to represent you students and I hope, you know, continue doing what you're doing and I hope what I did today lived up, you know, to, to your expectations as representative of all, all the people, all the students, so I just wanted to mention them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Guarino. Also, let's highlight Mr. Dunn, who has returned with a big trophy. Welcome back, Mr. Dunn.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you. It was a Coach's Award. It's been, been a crazy season.
Yes, you guys did wonderfully. So congratulations to North and South. We missed it, but we went around. Ms. Timmons?
I move to go into non-public on the RSA 91A32C.
C, perfect.
Okay, second.
Okay, that was seconded by Ms. Seem and then Ms. Gilio. All in favor of going into non-public, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, we are in non-public as of 8:23 PM. Thank you all for coming this evening and have a good night.